We're going to start our meeting now. Welcome to our Christmas Day Council. Welcome to our council members, welcome to our guests and staff. We appreciate all you being here. I'm Mayor Michelle Tate and I will be conducting tonight. We'll have an opening by Councilmember Lovren.
And so the question is, I love this for the news. Two. Just as. It's all. Where we are so thankful this night. Here in the city of Harrisville for citizens for all who work for the city. For those who all hear their time. Please bless us this night with thy spirit as we discuss the things that are on our agenda and good decisions. Will be positive for our city citizens with the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. We need to excuse Councilwoman Jackson, he's out of ten. From item number two, item number three, which is our consent items. This is to approve the meeting minutes for June thirteenth, twenty twenty three and June twentieth. Any changes? Okay.
I'll make the mention of the accept and approve the meeting minutes for June thirteenth and June twentieth. When you guys present.
So.
I don't want to say. I remember we taken the live octane spheres to recognize people in the city. Amazing things. So we have another little chance tonight, which I'm excited too. This is a recognition. Would you please come over from here? Utah Municipal Clerks Association State Certification. And I'm going to turn the time to give it to her and she knows what that means.
It's a piece of paper that has a lot of work behind it. So the state has started a new certification program for municipal clerks. And I don't know how many have this designation yet, but not many. It's brand new, just from the last year or two. So there's about a dozen of us. Those that are already their CMC and MMC are realizing that they have their certification hours. So they're needing to finally earn it. And I'm one of those that get to go around our area and our association and award those to the numbers as well.
Yeah, so tell us what you do on the, I believe you're part of the Association for Local.
Yes, on the Denver Board, which is our Davis Morgan Weaver Recorders Association Board. I'm the secretary for them. And so I keep track of all of the minutes. And again, I get to travel around the, all of those different counties, Davis, Weber and Morgan and recognized reporters that have heard this and their other international certifications and certifications.
So it's our pleasure to present to her after all of her work, her certificate. Congratulations.
Okay, I'll stand up. Thank you. Thank you. We love it when people go beyond to do their job. All right. Our business items. Another A is Future Farmers of America presentation by the council. I'm not sure who's going to present.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council and others, we appreciate your time this evening. My name is Chad Mary. Actually work for Weaver School District as a CT coordinator. One of my responsibilities to oversee the act programs throughout the district. And we have liaison with the four H to the Junior Livestock Program. That's been in place with Weaver County Fair since nineteen eighty eight. Little brief history, I don't know what you know or what you need to know or questions. I know a couple of questions beforehand and I'll give you a brief explanation. The county ran this since the fair started this past fall, late fall, early winter. It was decided by the county that the junior livestock needed to be their own entity. So we've been in the process the last few months developing the Weaver Junior Livestock Association and setting that up. And we've learned a lot. Most of us, if I can speak to the group, are pretty good about getting kids there, getting animals there, getting animals tagged, registered and running a show. The backside of the stuff we're, we're learning. And that's what the county did for us. Based on some conversation they had, they felt like it would be better if we were a separate entity. And part of that is the size and capacity, the number of kids, the number of animals and the amount of money coming in through the auction and donations. It was complicated for their county. So they've asked us to set it up. In that process of the separation, we asked, is there any startup money the county could attribute to the Junior Livestock Association? The county commissioners agreed that they would match up to $10,000 based on what the cities in the county do. The association decided that if they found at least 10 cities to donate a thousand dollars, that would match our 10,000. And then it was 20,000 for startup and carry on. We're not sure what it will take to run, but some money could be helpful to, to make sure that the opportunities for the kids to present their animals and the livestock program could continue in the county. So tonight, I, well, I'll first say I'm a fill in, kind of a last minute fill in. We run a summer act program, you know, sixteen teachers working and over 600 kids involved. It happened to be that they have a summer act tour today and some other leadership opportunities going on for around the county. And most of them are out of town. So I was asked to fill in for the advisors. And I found a couple of students from Weaver High School, their FFA program up there. And I'll let them take an opportunity to introduce themselves, say where they're from and kind of, kind of do that. It's maybe in Tomas.
Yeah, I'm from Pleasant View and I've had an opportunity to show animals at the fair for three years now. My first year I showed a goat and since then I've been showing a goat and a lamb at the fair. I've been able to learn so much from this experience. I, I carry animals in my house, so I raise them at our, the Weaver School District Act Facility out in Duro, Utah. And that's such a fun experience. I get to make new friends there. I've learned responsibility, time management, how to train them, how to care for goats and everything. And just have had such a flood opportunity with this. And I've also been able to make money through this program to help me with college and other things that I need help with. Yeah.
So I'm Tomas. I live here in Harrisville. So I have also for the past three years had the opportunity to show through FFA. I've shown a goat and a lamb, just as Libby has. It's, it definitely has been a very good learning experience for me in the sense of, well, I have the law, all my hours, everything I'm doing teaches me about my finances, about, you know, the animal care, all the things that have to go in, the feeding, the training and different like diseases and stuff that I'm having to watch out for. And it's given me the opportunity to start a little breeding herd of goats, actually. And I'm, I've sold a few to other members of our FFA chapter that will show their animals at the fair. It's also a big part of why I appreciate the fair so much is because it's helped me decide on my career, what I'm going to do for the rest of my life. I've decided I'm going to go into animal nutrition. I'm pursuing it early this fall, starting at Utah State University. So I'm excited for that and I'm really happy with all the opportunity the fair has given me to gain experience in that field and ultimately decide what I want to do. And I thank you guys for your time for listening to us and everything. And so, thanks.
Any specific questions you have for myself or the students?
I have one. Obviously it's not just training.
Correct, yeah. Who contacted you is probably an advisor from Fremont High School, but it is the whole county. Yeah, including Augment City Limits. For, so anybody in the county that lives in the county, student has to be enrolled in the four H or the FFA program. The FFA, they don't have an opportunity until they get into high school or later in junior high in high school to participate because they have to be in an agricultural education class. But once they're a member of either of those organizations, then they have the opportunity to purchase an animal, register the animal, they'll raise the animal. Depending on the animal, most of the smaller animals, they have to own for sixty days, the larger animals for ninety days. Most of the kids get them longer than that. And then they raise the animal, they go to clinics, they learn about nutrition. First off, how to purchase the animal, how to, you know, raise the animal, how to feed it properly, then how to present it. Then we have jackpots and little showcases along the way, clinics they can go to and learn, develop and then ultimately present the animal at the county fair, at the Junior Livestock Shows and then be able to sell them on that Saturday to be able to do that. And so it includes anybody in the county that falls under those. So yeah, sorry for the mix up if you thought it was just Fremont.
Actually, I've heard the presentation that we've done and still didn't understand that, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, there's, there's been, and we're, we're still learning and it's kind of fallen on us, but it is ultimately for the kids. And the advisors have tried to step up myself and there is a committee of superintendents and they ask us to go to the cities and present. So the kids, number one, get involved. Now, I don't want to put Libby on the spot, but I think if you'd have found Libby, what, three years ago, I'm not sure I could have convinced her to stand in front of you guys and talk. So she's a, she's developed, I've seen her grow and develop over the years through this experience and in the FFA, obviously some leadership opportunities that way. So does that answer that question? Okay.
Yeah. And so, you know, because I have friends that have been involved in this for years. You see, we sponsors to take care of earnings and that helps you as far as monies. My question is, what is Weaver County doing as far as the fair about setting to use the property space? Do you have to take care of all the needs and pay back to the county or someone who's, or maybe in a year, somewhat of that? I know that the 10,000 you explained and understand that whether it's one year or more. Yeah. But in return, I know that they have an operation you have to run. So what's it costing your account or your separate entity to use their facilities?
Yeah, great question. And there has been a lot of negotiation between the two groups of what can we do? But we are paying a rental for the facility. In that case, they will provide obviously the facility, the showroom, the places to stall the animals and all the water, that kind of stuff, shavings, et cetera. They are given so many sponsor tickets, some buckle money. And I don't have all the details in front of me of that, but there is some negotiation. So they're being more than fair to work with this.
That's what I want.
And, and they've been great. There was some feelings of like, wow, we're not trying to make this a bad situation. They love what they're doing and they were retaining some money from the students' auction items and in keeping that. So that's not going to be a part of their program anymore either. They're going to let the entity, the association decide, how much do we keep from kids to try to run it? So this first couple, probably two or three years, we're going to have to figure out what does it cost and what is the county willing to do? It's going to be negotiated. I think they said the three years and then renegotiated it three years and deciding how much they want to charge us for rent and what they're willing to provide. Because we don't want to make this, for lack of a better term, a bad divorce. We want to still make sure we're friends. But because of the monies, I mean, it was over $800,000, over, over 450 kids were involved in this. So it was huge for their accounting office to just all of a sudden take all this on and put through it. And the truth is, most of the counties throughout the state have their own Junior Livestock Association entity separate from the county. And it's not run a hundred percent by the county. But nineteen eighty eight, we're all just having a good old time and I think they just took it on and it's evolved. And even though some people say, well, agriculture is getting smaller and smaller, this is still a huge platform in all of our cities and county areas throughout the county. But kids still have an opportunity to participate and an opportunity to learn and develop.
So where would you say that you have to go to take care of your animals? Cause you can't have them up in Pleasant View.
Um, I have to go out to the Weaver School District Ag Facility is what it is and it's all the way out in Taylor. So.
Yeah, I heard that. I wasn't sure what he says. You have to go off, yeah, every state.
Just before you get to Nevada. So, so a little history on some cities do not allow animals in their jurisdiction and stuff and understandably. And so the, the school district itself looked about, it was about eight years ago, we started looking into an opportunity for kids. Cause we were seeing a lot of suburban kids, you know, kids in subdivisions and not having an opportunity, but they had a desire. So we built a little facility there and we annexed it intentionally, knowing that there would be a high school and today it's being built, knowing that that is a possibility. So we cornered off a little section there and anybody in the county that's a member of the four H and we've been allowed as opportunity. We, we got pretty crowded, so we haven't always let the four H be there, but we've done that. We've worked with a few local people, not really business, a lot of old areas that have shut down. They've had some sheds and even some personal people that allowed a few animals to, to like kids house them a little bit closer to home. But a lot of these kids that are dedicated, they, that's their opportunity and they will drive out there and take care of their animals at that facility.
You really can train a goat, huh?
I did, yeah.
So I don't understand, just, I just.
Yeah.
So $800,000 is too big for the county to take care of. How do they expect just someone to come in and do this?
Yeah.
Did you have to create organization or?
So we're, yeah. So in the process, and that's the part where we've actually, Craig Jansen, I don't know if you know, Jensen RB, you've heard of that. He is basically retired. He came in and he says, hey, I know how to run business and I'm willing to volunteer. And he literally stepped up. They voted him as the, the chairman of, of the association. And there is a board, we're, we're starting a forum board to just make this happen. And I don't know all the details of why the county decided to, to separate. I know that was one of them, just the amount of monies. So yeah, we got a huge learning curve ahead of us and, you know, we're probably going to have to hire an accountant to come in and really run the books and write checks and make sure invoices are sent out and are people paying. And we got donations coming, we got auction items coming. So, so it's kind of a big process. And like I said, the, the boots on the ground is what they call themselves, the superintendent over the, the auction, those have run an auction, the one over the goats, the lambs, the hogs, the, the steers. They know how to get the kids there and make the show happen. It's all the backing and, and hopefully Craig, I mean Craig's been great. He, he just stepped up, volunteered, knew, knew we needed some help. So we're, we're working through it and we're, we're going to have a successful show in a month.
Is there? One more question.
Yeah.
How many cities have given you money?
Currently, I know Far West is committed, Plain City is committed and I haven't been to all the meetings. I know North Augments in a week or two, so I'm, I'm not sure. I know two, three, four that have for sure, but I haven't, we, we've really kind of divided and conquered this, so I'm not sure who's committed or not. I know it was brought up at the, is it the Waco, Waco meeting? And I don't know if you guys discussed the detail of who was entering out ultimately it's your, your vote tonight? Or I don't know if it's an action item tonight or not.
It's not an action item.
It's discussion.
Let's discuss it later, folks. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I do have a flyer here if you want. There's QR link, more information, anything like that.
That would be great.
And I don't know how to follow up. I know Cassie's been contacting you, is my understanding, or Haley, I'm not sure which one, who's talking to her. Do you need us to follow up or come back when it is an action item? Okay. Okay, so plan on next month at the?
Me too. Someone to.
And then again, they just pitched out a thousand dollars to 10 cities. I think there's thirteen cities and then fifteen in the city. Some of them probably aren't as present as others with the kids being involved, but they figured if they could get at least 10. But we're happy to take any donation above or below that or anything you agree to.
Have you tried going to?
Yes, a, a little bit. And there's, not to get into too much detail, but a lot of, a lot of the local businesses, especially the big phenomena, example would be like Smith and Edwards is they've already, they contacted the county, Weaver County Fair and say, hey, we want to be a sponsor. So we're negotiating how that flows because before it was just open and we just got it. Now we're like, okay, are we going after this one or do we leave that one alone? Or this one's already committed to this part of the fair and which ones are which? So we're, we're working through that. There is a person just appointed last month at our meeting that's specifically supposed to go out to businesses and try to get monies that way as well. We thought we'd start with the cities that was suggested. Just because you guys are great, usually kind of support the fair and have, have involved.
Thank you. Any, anything else?
Thought we might have seen, I'd like to see.
You'd like to see. Sounds like you've got an answer for you later.
Okay, so we'll plan on.
It'll be August first, actually.
Okay, so we'll plan on somebody being here.
Sorry.
Okay, I was just seeing if that was the weekend affair.
It is.
Yeah, so. Okay, we'll, we'll do it again and then my understanding is they contact you and do an invoice or whatever. That works out, I guess.
Oh, that's right.
Well, maybe.
Yeah. We'll, we'll follow, we won't take any time. We appreciate your time. Do we need to stay for anything else?
You're.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I don't remember reading municipal public infrastructure, yeah, infrastructure district discussion. So see.
It's like, it's been a long time, but it's, you know, I'm sure you guys are a cold sweat. Gosh, I'm not sure if you're going to make this far. I promise I decided to come to the ground breaking, but congratulations to the city. I, I unfortunately had a conflict at that time, but it, it's exciting, such good things happening here. So congratulations on all that fun stuff going on. So next fun topic, the city gets to be discussed and educated and happy to answer questions and, and kind of go through that. So it's a public infrastructure districts. And so maybe what I could do to start out is kind of give just a quick, maybe one minute summary here, go over some of the different parts, I think, applied to this applicant that's reached out to the city. And if you can dive into some questions, concerns, and I, I think just a little discussion, because I'm sure there are some questions and concerns from the city council, mayor, staff as well. So public infrastructure districts, think of it like any other financing tool we've seen here in Utah, RDAs, you may be more familiar with that, the redevelopment agencies with tax increment. What, what is it? I'm just trying to help you understand that the public infrastructure district is a financing tool that allows private parties such as developers to access tax exempt markets. That's really what it is. As you guys remember, when we were looking at the interest rates on your bonds, I kept making sure you knew, these are tax exempt rates. These are rates that if somebody buys, they don't have to pay taxes on the gains if they enter the insurance, the third of the interest that's paid out to them. So then they're able to offer you a discounted rate. Same thing with public infrastructure districts. It was created about two or three years, years ago in the state legislature. It allows a developer that may have lots of property or, you know, depending on the size of his property, but is wanting to build it out and pay for his horizontal infrastructure. It allows him to issue either special assessment bonds or limited tax general obligation ones. We're going to focus more on the special assessment say, because I think that's what's being asked by the city. But allows them to form a local government, a public infrastructure district. And through that infrastructure district, they can issue debt at tax exempt rates to pay for the horizontal infrastructure that goes into their community. So I just wanted to in simplest terms, it's a financing program or entity that's only responsibility and only goal is to finance. And then once the bonds are paid off, either special assessment or limited GO, the district dissolves. It's entirely used to finance projects, period. There's a few things that make this unique and, and this is just something to touch base on. Special assessment bonds aren't new to Utah. I, I want to make that very clear. Special assessment bond's been happening, I mean, up in Weaver County for, for a long time. I forget the name of the development, but I think maybe Powder Mountain was the name of it or one of the resorts up there. Weaver County was the issuer of those bonds. But the issue prior to the PIT legislation, just to give you guys a little history on how some of this came about, was that when a special assessment bond was issued, it had to be issued through either the county or the city. And so what that meant is that some of these responsibilities, such as if this lot doesn't pay their assessment on it, and now they're forced to be foreclosed on to pay the bond and pay, you know, catch up with that bond payment that they're responsible for. The burden fell on your shoulders. So doesn't that sound fun? Now the city gets to do this project and then they get to be the ones to say, okay, now we're going to be the ones to go through the foreclosure process. We're the ones that have to track the assessment. People are going to call us because on the bonds, it's going to say special assessment bond of Harrisville City. So there was lots of reasons that PIT legislation came around because really who does, this benefit, it benefits the developer. I mean, in, in, in all actuality, now there may be some benefits, additional benefits that help the city and the residents and the people moving into that area. But the developer wouldn't be doing it if there wasn't an incentive, right? They, they wouldn't be doing it if there was an inherent benefit towards them. And so what the PIT legislation did is it allowed cities and counties to authorize the creation of a PID. And so that this burden of collecting the assessment, this burden of foreclosure on the assessment, of tracking and a bond payment, of issuing the debt is no longer on your responsibility or on your balance sheet. All this now is on the Pid's balance sheet and is on the Pid's responsibility and so on and so forth. So it still allows for these tools to be done, but takes this burden off you and puts it onto the PID. So I just want to give you kind of the understanding of why some of this came about. Because cities and counties sometimes said, yeah, we don't mind, you know, we, we hope that this would happen, but we don't want to have to put this on our, you know, on our, you don't want to have to track this. We don't want to, even if we're arms length transaction, we just don't want to be associated with it. So this was kind of the tool that was invented to, to get us to the next step so that a PIT could do it and kind of hold the city heartless from every process that's involved in it. And so that's the good. I just kind of want to help you guys understand high level summary. So, so that's kind of the origin of why these were created. Now, does it mean that the city should just, hey, yeah, sure, here you go, here you go. No, I, I think still regardless if it's special assessment or if it's limited GO or whatever it may be, I still think the city has a responsibility to review what's being put into place to make sure that this isn't something that's just an enrichment for the developer, but something that's going to obviously help the development, help the future residents and be a benefit to the city. So I, I think there's a compromise in place. So now as Pids are being approached today, the city may not be in control of it, but you're in control of what's put into the governing document that you approve. So everything, do you guys remember when we were describing the parameters resolution of the bond? We kind of said up to a certain amount, up to a certain interest rate. The governing document is very similar to that. You're outlining the parameters that the PIT can act within. You know, can they do special assessment bonds? Can they do a limited tax? Can they do X, Y and Z? All of that gets put into the governing document. So that's the most important part for the city as you're evaluating or reviewing these PIDs is to make sure it's what you're comfortable with and what you want. Because as soon as you approve that, whatever's in those parameters, they can act within and they don't have to come back to the city for additional permissions. So that's kind of the outline, that's the structure on how it's created. The special assessment bond is how it's done. Now, there's different levels to Pids and understand potentially what this one wants compared to ones we've seen across the state. It's, you know, there, there's varying degrees of risk, if that makes sense. Um, it's um, you know, there, there's varying degrees of risk, if that makes sense. So in this case, I would say some of the least risky pits would be ones that say, hey. We want a PIT to be able to do a special assessment, which means we're going to pledge our land, our property. Nobody else can be brought into this unless they are approved and give us a hundred percent consent and they're within the annexation area. So you can approve all that. Spelled out the governing document, but most of the time when it's something along these lines will say it's encompassing my like. I want to use my like this collateral rule. So that I can pledge it to access the tax exempt markets through a special assessment. And Utah law dictates how much they're adding collateral. This usually it's based off three times the valuation. So. If their property's worth three billion dollars, they can only borrow a million dollars against it as part of the assessment or the lien that they put up against it for the bonds. So they may say, we want to do this as part of the special assessments, so I can like raise money for it. Again, has to be used for public infrastructure. Sometimes this is given, you know, spelled out as part of their thing. They'll say. We're going to use it for roads. We're going to use it for curb. We're going to use it for, you know, the, the different things that are going to be dedicated back to an entity such as yourself. Or, you know, depending on what it is. But remember, it has to be dedicated back to a public entity. The PIT's not going to hold on to it. It's not going to control it. That's one of the standards is again, it's just the financing tool. It's not the O and M tool. To, to pay for the ongoing maintenance and so forth. So. They may say, great, we want to do this, but I'm never going to pass this assessment on. To the end user. So I may sell this off to a DR Orton with three hundred lot, you know, they come in and buy three hundred lots. And they take over the assessment, but when that building's permit is pulled so that I can sell it to the mayor, she wants to buy a new house. I have to pay off or the home builder has to pay off that assessment before it transfers. Over to that end user. And that's one of the, we would say, one of the least risky type kids because. You know, if, if a new family or somebody is looking to, to buy into this development. You know, they're never going to feel, have to make a payment on that assessment. Now that doesn't mean that that assessment may not be built into the purchase price in their home. Absolutely, it could. I'm sure the developer would say, okay, you know, we, we had to borrow fifteen thousand against this. So, you know, we have to make sure our assets in market. But the market's really going to dictate how much they can sell it. Somebody's not going to pay them or just say, oh, I'm sorry. Borrow a little bit more, I'm going to give you some more money for this instead of buying the cheaper, you know, that's, that's not how this works, but. Long story short, the assessment never gets passed on to the end user. It, so it never really ends up on what we would call. The residential side or kind of the retail side of the process. Least risky type PID. So everybody, any questions on that? Because I think this is kind of what they're focusing on either this one or kind of the next one I described. Is that in other cases, they may do a special assessment bond. But they'll say, we want the ability. To either pass this assessment on with the property to the end user. So if somebody wants to come in and buy it and then they can decide. Well, we're going to bundle this into our mortgage and pay it off, or we're going to pay it off with cash. Or we actually like the terms of this bond, we're just going to make the payment on ourself. But we're taking on the risk as the residential user that buys this property. That if we don't make our payment on this special assessment. It's going to be a lot severe than if we don't make our payment like on a mortgage or on a, a property tax type situation. So they could have some. Very quick foreclosure processes and things in, in mind to make sure the bondholders get made whole. So there's more risk associated with that one. And it, in my opinion, when I, when I talk about the different risk levels. It means that there needs to be more consideration and, and process put in as the county reviews it, right? Because again, you want to be good stewards to your future residents here within, I'm sorry, within the city. So that's the biggest difference. So you have your least risky, non-transferable, special assessments is what we call it. The next one will be a transferable, where he may say, yes, we've assessed each one of these lots. You know, eight thousand dollars to build the infrastructure we need. And that assessment will be attached to this lot and it's up to the next buyer or the residential buyer. If they want to pay it off or if they want to roll into their mortgage and pay it off or, you know, their mortgage company may require them to. But that's their responsibility. It's no longer the developers. So they're passing along that assessment to the next user. So again, a little bit more layer there. The next one would be, and I don't think this is a consideration at this point or. May not ever be with the city, but there is the, the ability that the PIT can levy a property tax. And this is, it's whole other can of worms, but I won't go into details because I don't think it applies to this development, but. When, whenever that comes into play, there's, there's a lot of due diligence, I would say takes effect because you want to make sure. If people are moving into an area that has a higher property tax being led by the PIT, that there's a substantial benefit. Being placed into that and whether that's upgraded parks, whether that's, you know, just the regional infrastructure or whatever it is, we, we take that. Taxing authority very seriously. But in this case, we won't discuss that. I just want to, but we understand that there's multiple layers. So. You have your least risky with the non-transferable. If they want to transfer the assessment. It definitely needs to have some additional considerations. You know, they need to, uh, as part of their proposal, proposal. Their LOI and governing documents spell out exactly why they need this, show the pros and the cons, the benefits, you know, they need to help them understand. Why are you needing this? And then if there's a mill levy involved in property tax, that's where you really want to do your due diligence. So. I'm going to pause right there. Just to see if I've lost anybody or everybody at this point. Any, any current questions before I continue?
Who runs? Who is the, who's the?
The pit board.
Is for over the.
Correct. So it, it's dictated in the governing document that typically sits, it's um, the initial developers because they're the property owners. As this property switches hands, by law, they have to give up their seats to the new property owners. Now, you would, you would think that there's a, a, a certain prestige that maybe comes from being on a pit board. I promise you, because I've looked at what they have to do over the years, it, it may be the most thankless job because literally they would meet. To pay the debt. And that, and potentially refinance the bonds. And that's it. Because typically, once they use their authorization, which will be within the first couple of years as they're doing the development portion of it. After that authorization's gone, there's, there's really nothing that the pit board does aside approve. You know, maybe some monthly billings if they have attorney fees or an auditor fee or, you know, something simplified like that. So they do have a small O and M budget. Just to pay for the housekeeping items, but um, pit board members, uh, yeah, it's, it's very. I, I think the bigger concern we've had as we've looked at pit projects is. What happens if nobody wants to do it? How will we, you know, how can we make sure we have enough people that actually want to be on the board? But. Um, we have contingencies in there for that as well. But, you know, I, I will say this, I. I think kids are an important tool. I think. Two years ago, when the housing market was booming. They were less important because a city like yourself could say, hey. We don't perhaps need to incentivize this. You're going to, you know, you're going to get these lots sold. People are going to build houses, you know. You know, people can get a mortgage for three percent and, and these are going to, you know, go pretty quick. Nowadays, I, I think a lot of developers and, and maybe yourself, if you, you know, if we, if the cities. You know, or if you guys attract the building permits is, you know, is, you know, maybe statewide, if you look to some of that. We're starting to see this slowdown because of the interest rate portion of it. And so I think these tools are more appropriate now because there really is. A gap between, you know, how do we make this project work to what the city wants via the development agreement? You know, let's get all the specifications in there. But also, you know, how can we do that with trying to hold everyone harmless? Because in reality, what, what's the alternative if they don't use a PIT for their horizontal infrastructure? Well, they have to go to like a, a specialty kind of commercial type thing. They get taxable rates, so they're immediately paying for the developer is to finance their project. And as part of that taxable rate and that additional curatorial financing. When they have to pay more for it, that usually means they end up seeing it along during evaluation of their lots or so on and so forth. Or they can't build their community or they have to phase it out differently, piecemeal it. So the PIT really is a tool to say. Okay, if we see that there's a need here to get you from A to B. We will help through the PIT, see that where that extra value is needed. And fill in the gap so that you can get there and build the community that we want our residents to be a part of. So that, that, that's kind of, you know, the, the idealistic thing of it. So I, I've seen really good pits. I've seen really bad pits, ones that I'm just scratching my head like, you know what I mean? I certainly think that was needed. Um, it, it's, like I said, the devil's in the details. It's, it's really just what are they wanting? What are they asking for? And making sure the city has done its due diligence. So if a resident comes, the city can say, hey, yeah, we did it because of X, Y, and Z. Excess and um, and, and, and two. There should have been a resident come and say, how do you know I was going to have a, an additional assessment on my property? All of those disclosures, now that it's been a couple of years, have been caught up in the Utah market. And I believe with the Utah Real Estates Association, they've all uh, have proper language as part of their filings now too that specify whether or not. A PIT is in with the area. So these shouldn't be catching people by surprise. But there can be even more additional language that, you know, you could stipulate. We've seen them dictate if this is going to be in an HOA. Needs to be part of the HOA packet if somebody's planning to move into the area. So there's. Safety precautions that are looked at, but anyways, I, I feel like I, I. Now I'm starting to get kind of in the weeds here before we, you know, I don't, I don't want to be giving you so much information that it's kind of going over, but. Um, so, so that's kind of my thought and, and specifically to this development, you know, I, I haven't seen the, the details of it yet. But, you know, depending on what the city's interests are, I think that's how you approach it. Is, you know, if the city wants to see something come together and if it's a development that you're, you're wanting to see done that has a development. That's really going to benefit the city. Maybe that's through, you know, the, the impact fees, additional connections, whatever that may be. It's growth, then maybe a. Maybe you're just sort of like, hey, we need this additional residential housing. I mean, we're working with them. And he said, and people are paying two thousand dollars a month in rent for a shed. And you're just like, that's crazy. So that's why they're like, hey, we want a PIT because we need residential housing. We don't have enough housing with our community. To, to fulfill, you know, the needs of, of our residents. And so. Those are the good, right? I mean, those are the ones where you're like, this is a joint project, so we really feel like it's going to add a benefit to our city. But. So any questions? I, I know this is all very generic, high level information, but I, I think it's important. That the city council understand that you do have the power, you have the control. It needs to be something that you want. Something that's going to benefit your city, it's going to help your city. And that's why you would incentivize it through this PID, give them those permissions. Because it really is going to help nowadays with how high interest rates have gotten for them to be able to access the tax exempt markets to help. Basically alleviate some of those pains by making it a more efficient financing.
So who? So the city council would basically be the, like a board that would. Say what goes into the PID, correct?
Correct. So the governing document that gets submitted from the developer, his, his financing team. They, it'll specify what they're asking for. And then within those details, that's what would be created and approved by the city council. So it's important that. You know, you, you have your financing team ready or how we approach it. Again, some of these are, are a little bit more generic. If it's non-transferable or if it's kind of more the medium risk where, you know, maybe it's a smaller assessment they potentially want to transfer. Those are things that usually are, are quicker, you know what I mean? Maybe just take a few meetings, meeting with staff, meeting with the economic development director, which. May also be.
So that's the second part of my question, Mark, this is. So who does, who helps us as a city council?
Yeah.
Know that we're doing the right thing if we were to pass or say, yes, it's due to this.
Yeah, and, and, and that's.
Who's our professional?
Yeah, and, and that's where, you know, having acted as the city's municipal advisor in the past. We would love to, to continue to help you and review those documents, make sure that you guys are going, you know, through the right steps and everything else. Um, you know, typically on these things, you know, we've, um, depending on what the city asks, you know, they may. Ask us to, to also make sure the PIT's going through the right manner as well. Or, you know, i- i- if you want to strictly on your financing team, it, it really is at your discretion, but. I think it's important that you have a team put together to review these because. It, it's not necessarily that I feel like any developer or their financing team would ever try to, to put something that's disingenuous or something, but. Sometimes they're just language that you guys don't see on a daily basis that, you know, may have a little concern, like for instance, I'll review one. Uh, this was about last. And uh, they had, it was actually a mill. And so in my, it's one of the higher ones, they, they were going to get fired. Probably, I think it was six mills, but they also put it in language for an inflation factor. They said, or. It'll never exceed, I think it was like two thousand dollars per year on each lot and property tax. But we have the ability to use discretion on the inflator. So, you know, two thousand in today's dollars, maybe. X amount in, and, and so it was kind of vague, but you're trying to say, oh, like, okay. So it gives a lot of flexibility on how they could do that. Again. I don't think this team would do something like that, but those are just little things that they may say, hey, that's, that's industry standard, you know. Trying to be disingenuous, but that may, but might, may not be what you want. If that makes sense. So, and that's what our goal would be is to specify and help you outline exactly what it is that they're asking for. So that you're comfortable with it.
So if you were to help us. What's the cost to the city for that?
Yeah.
It, it, do we have, I mean, it's costing us to do this for somebody?
It wouldn't. So this, the city's financing team and everything else, all that gets paid from the developer, the PIT applicant. And all that um, is invoiced directly to them and we would have a, a, you know, it, it's not an egregious fee. We've done this many times with. Sam on, you know, helping, you know, helping with the developer and everything else. And so, you know, all those fees are, are sent to the developer and, and paid. You know, at completion of the project or review. So. It, it shouldn't ever be on the, on your dime, if that makes sense. Yeah, no, none of it is.
So the bottom line is, is on the flip side of the defaults, is this team can become responsible acting on default?
Sorry, which team?
The financial team, you said it's created with the city council landlord, things like that. They're the whole. So in Lee Falls, then they have to go there. And if the transaction is sold, is that their job too?
It's all held harmless from the city, so it would all be at the discretion of the PID. So if there's a default on the property. Correct. What typically happens is because these people that are buying these bonds, they're high yield investors. They're not. They're not your everyday lawn pop type investor. So they put in a lot of different restrictions as far as that goes. So. They give the trustee the authority that holds the money and everything else. If they're not getting their payment, then the trustee. Through the PID would be forced to foreclose on that property and uh, make sure that they're made full or, you know, they've worked out some agreement, but. The nice thing is you guys are separated from that, so it would never come back to the city. I mean, that's the most important part. The city is held harmless at the end of the day. So. But you're, did that answer your question? All of it goes to the PID um, at that point?
Yeah. So I, I understand that the city is held harmless. That's not the issue. But the issue is now city council members or whoever's may have on the PID governing board now wears an extra hat.
Sorry.
There could be a complication or whoever that's.
So the city council would never be on the board. It would only.
Clarification.
Yeah, it, it would only.
City and then all of a sudden the city council is part of that. I want to make sure.
Well, it, it has to be a landlord. So if potentially one of you moved into that development, you could. Ask to be on the board or, or, you know, if you wanted some more responsibilities. You could, you could run for the pit board, but no, it would have to be people that live within that area that are a part of that PID boundary. They're the ones that would be on the board.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I didn't understand, but no, you're right.
How long does this typically take?
The PIT process through the governing document, um, a- again, it, it, you know, if, if they're really just wanting. To do non-transferable special assessment type bonds, it can be relatively quick. I mean, if, if, if it's one of the least risky things. You know, I, we would probably just coordinate with Sam's team and say, hey, can you send us your draft of the governing document? Make sure everything's in line. We've come present, go over everything. And then the next step would be they'd hold a petition, public hearing. And then approval of the governing document. So. You could do that probably in less than a month. If you're, you know, if you really want to, to move quickly on it. I know we have some additional holidays coming up towards the end of the month, so, you know, maybe a month and a half. If it's transferable assessments, you know, again, there may be some more due diligence. We want to understand exactly what the money's going towards, just to make sure that if it is going to be passed on. To an end user, that again, that it's money that's being spent with what the city anticipates it to be spent on. Not just kind of being passed off for. Not just kind of being passed off for, you know, we we wanna be able to point to it and say, yes, there was an assessment on that, but it's because you got X from it. And since this isn't a mill levy one, you know, those usually take a few months. But with with it just being one of those two, it's, you know, could be done a month to two months, depending on how motivated you are to wanna get it.
I have another question. Sorry to ask you so many questions.
That's crazy.
You're not allowed to. I'm sorry, it is.
So what we're basically need to do is wait to see what they're.
Correct. If the city council isn't just, no, we're not interested, let's let's see what they have to say, let's go through the process. Um, you know, i- in some cases, Harrisville may be a little different. For instance, like I've heard a city where they have, you know, tens of thousands of, you know, develop whole land to put together a pit policy. I don't think that's necessarily needed. You guys may get one other pit in the entire existence, so I don't wanna have to put you through that effort. It's kind of brain damage, you know, they're they're getting three or four applications every year type thing. So you're you're definitely a different vote, but um, yeah, I would say if you're amenable to to looking to see what they wanna do. Kind of what their plan is and so forth, then the direction would be, yeah, let's go ahead and ask them to put together their plan of financing. Their governing document, submit it to our working group, have us review it, and then we'll review it internally. And we'll put a schedule of events together for, uh, you may be able to to look at at that point. Yeah, yeah. So so what they would do is once they do that, we probably put together a summary, present it to the city council, explain what we would do. The developer, his team may be here as well to kind of put on some additional emphasis on it as well. And then once they've explained it, then you could say, okay, let's go ahead to the next step. So you wouldn't have to vote at that time. Next step would be in the public hearing and everything else. And then the governing document with any changes you may suggest or add to it, that would be presented for a vote in the city council at that point. So you have a couple more times before you have to make a firm decision currently. Well, a lot of words, I'm sorry. I I, you guys are probably like, this guy just is too too much. This is.
Well, I just want to give counsel of. Station. Your. It's tool. Developers qualification, I reached out to give some options that. Obviously, super helpful. Since we just went through. Says to me, it was very simple. We started, this was on site. Carries. To take action on it. This is a similar, says to them. Steps come all itself. Particularly. The city that. So we wanted to bring. So that he can give the the team from the city side. Self, rookie, and we just have our director. To break, or to edit, to review all those. Forward. So that's another reason why. Just to make sure you're in the know of what steps is taking to move forward as well.
And and there may be a third party, including Brandon Johnson, that, but and and this may be, you know, depending on Brandon's workload. It may be a different bond council too, but you know, what whatever the city decides, we can begin, none, none of the fees, none of the costs falls on the city's shoulders. But we'd make sure that, you know, I I've never had to worry about Brandon overcharging or anything like that, so.
So the way you described it though, they can only borrow a certain amount of money on that land?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe they can get the money for the infrastructure, you know, roads, sidewalks. But then he still falls short. Getting the construction up and running, then what do they do?
So the bondholders are not going to allow him to borrow that money unless he can prove he has the other financing vehicles available and ready to go. So he would have to access traditional financing. So this is only to supplement his infrastructure. It's not to pay for the whole thing. So he may be able to borrow a portion of it at tax exempt rates, and then the rest of it at traditional finance.
But he has to prove he has anything to have.
Correct. Sammy?
Yeah, Sam Miller from DA Davidson, I was here last month, give you guys a presentation on pits. We'd be acting as the underwriter for the bonds. Um, yeah, the answer to your question is by law, under the Special Assessment Act. You should be careful with the language that I'm using because that is illegal language, so I don't wanna say that. But by law, if you were to issue special assessment bonds, you have to have the money in place to bridge the gap from what the bonds can raise to what it will take to get to a finished lot. So if it costs twenty five million dollars to get two finished lots on all this development, and they borrow sixteen million or fifteen million. That can bridge that nine, ten million gap with conventional source of financing and prove it before we can issue our.
And we can also say though, you've gotta have money to complete the entire project. I don't wanna piecemeal this together, that's that's the. Yeah. I wanna see it done.
So. When you say the whole project, that's.
Talking every house that they put into uh, our agreement, every condo, every, everything.
Yeah, what what they might not do is if you have a seven hundred unit development, just what we're anticipating here. You're not gonna source conventional financing to for units five hundred through seven hundred. You may be able to bond, market may be willing to accept you, to give you, lend you money for the first three hundred and then the next three hundred. But no one in the market is gonna commit to, you know, absorption that's the ten years out.
And and that, and so that would all be described in their phasing plan as part of the did document that they submit. So you would see whatever they're proposing. So you may say, we're giving you authorization for special assessment of the bonds, not to exceed this amount. And they'll say, great, here's our plan of financing. We're gonna issue X amount of bonds for the first phase to build in this portion right now. And then once this portion's done in year three, then we're gonna issue X amount of bonds in year four to finish up that phasing as well. But that'll be described as part of the governing document, so you'll see their plan, and that would be based off your approval as well. So ju- just know, so so a lot of that information. It it's not known to me that yet, but it will be presented to us, and that would be part of your consideration of how well you feel like this will help in their phasing and progress and so forth.
This is for infrastructure only?
Correct. It can only be used to public or to finance public infrastructure. And so all that public infrastructure has to album either to the city or, I'm not sure if you have a special service district to provide some of the infrastructure as well. But it would need to go somewhere, not to be owned and retained by the. So so lo- lots of questions, I think, still, um, but if the the council again, kind of just says, well, we we're willing to take a look and see what they have to propose, then the next steps would be to see, okay, let's see what they're proposing. And then allow us to have the opportunity to review it, we'll put together summaries, then we can present on any questions and concerns, have another discussion. And then based off that discussion, then they would prepare the final documents at that. Now, just. Just one of these.
And fully for to take a look at. That's all we're asking.
It it's just, we just don't wanna waste your time or their time. So stay with my saying, no, we're not interested. Then just say to everybody a lot of time and have a time to, you know, put together something that's already done in order. But if it's, okay, we're, listen to what they have, and then we can make our decision based off those facts. Then that's, then that's all we, we just kind of, yeah, that makes sense, we'll we'll take them on here.
Yeah, we're three years into this now, so that's the issue. But to start.
But I will just say this, giving them the pit doesn't guarantee that they're will issue the bonds and do the project, if that makes sense. So it's not like, hey, we give, I I just wanna make that completely clear. It's not like, hey, if we do this, we've seen pits that couldn't find a market for the bonds. Or, you know, again, just the housing market collapses or something outside of anybody's control. But I just don't wanna give you the assumption that, hey, if we approve the pit and check, project's done and done. But they they issue the bonds with the pit, then they have to use that money to what's specified within the governing document. So I think that's the assurance the city council gets.
Are they out of compliance now with what's been? As far as the bringing to the law with systems.
So they are.
They're in default.
So.
I mean, they have surpassed the time.
They have the timeline in its past, yes. The. Two years. We are just over two years. They adopted, we adopted the master development agreement in June of twenty twenty one. So the twenty. So we'll we'll discuss that further.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to see you guys.
See, discussion possible action to adopt these five reasons, which is an amendment to CP two. Yes, council, on to the next agenda. Those were, I was to you with a positive application from the commission in June meeting. Although background was included on on staff. So the city's received an notification for its exchange to our land use ordinance. And this amendment is specifically related to the several weeks' application for. We did hold a public hearing and we made ten planning commission meeting to receive public input. And we included. For your review or speaking. Additional discussion was had on. Commission in June meeting, and the commissioners did represent that option at that time. And then I did wanna point out that one change was changed, made to those ordinance from the ninth. Version to the June fourteen, naturally to the access. The commissioners asked for an update to allow the access language to include more. In the city where we're having difficulty with development because of. So for example, if there's a development stipend. Give an access permit for Harrisville Road, Washington Boulevard. Two street or seven or something like that, the certain conditions, right? State road. So that was. I just wanted to drop. And then staff has just prepared the current zoning. Balance against the future land use map in the map. And some renderings of what stuff makes looks like. It also included the developer June meeting. Prepared and included renderings of this building and pointed out, peak of the building is the seventh feet. At the sides. So if he, it would be more in the fifty feet, I believe. Discussion. And so there. Development team. So public notice was given in the fourth public hearing and the public hearing was held. For this ordinance, and it's here for your discussion. Council, do you have any questions for Jenny?
Just wanted to ask. The. Work has been approved, it's been right. The. That's all.
So they received. Previous plan. That. Will blind the. Dumps. The infrastructure for dumps. So they received. Through the commission and through that approval, staff was made aware of it, included jumps. And so subsequent discussions after that point. Without moving forward, they chose to. They. Essentially. Re designing the entire project and they will go to step one. This this will negate any proposals, the project's same, is that the question you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this project currently. They only approved this funding as a way of living, but they did for the. Zone change to parcels, that's still in effect, the zone change. They, this proposal would require additional zoning changes that have not been taught for yet.
Screen.
The access point, there, there currently it's not access available to that for. They were going to use that access for utilities, I believe, in the initial discussions as far as. It, there for that today.
Again, I, I'm curious, I saw stuff that's great, anyway. Somewhere here, so somebody said maybe approximately a hundred and twelve thousand. Taxes. Curious. Said, is that what it said in there?
So during the discussion, they developed. Indicate that they. They estimated it would bring out twenty. That's not tax related.
Okay, I remember, so what's that?
So references that would come to the city for sales on their retail units. To potentially be, it is a part to be like taxes, it can be an assessment on the actual business itself would bring in. State.
See, sure.
No, there's no.
And I guess my question goes with that is. If we're gonna, if this gets passed, then you have big activities up there. Send me ready for police officers to help with that. Is that correct? I'm wondering what the cost would be. I mean, if they're having professional football games there. Are police gonna be there to help with things? And what's the cost of, was that gonna cost the city?
So when we go through, for example, the, I'll use a big box store, a name is. When we go through their business licensing, we have what we call a disproportionate assessment. Those, and they get credits for having security system, for having. Site security, property security that they. So I imagine that would be similar in that situation where we would assess what they're providing, but we can adjust and we do adjust businesses. We adjust their sale, their, excuse me, business license fee to recruit the cost that it costs the state for response to those businesses. And we're currently doing our business license study at day, right? So we'll have some really real numbers on current businesses, of course, while we're assessing the future business.
Okay, thank you. I did answer that question, yes.
So as we look at this, um, also as far as access to seven fifty. It says in there, what was it? It's depending on what is that being a state or. Or breathing? So the future rate would be say collector room?
So seven fifty, what's, we've identified as a future collector based on transportations. So seven fifty west, we've identified as a future collector based on transportation study and they are. To make eligible. So state funding, we have to identify a classification on that, on break that. So we start with funding in. Okay, was it? We just did a yes.
So currently in the process, they're in a transportation impact study. Plan and we submitted to WFRC last year and the state of Utah that we're reclassifying seven fifty west. Um, we have to do that right now so that in eight years we can apply for federal, state and federal funding. To make that about the width of, well. One lane in the center, one ninety twain in the center.
Typical Larson line.
Typical Larson line right now. Um, so it will be a wider street. Again, we also already have a few commercial outlets on the seven fifty, as we all know. The the impact to that row. Is actually more right now. Due to our neighboring city and the way they closed down. Twenty five fifty and how they intend to turn that. Later, right now, uh, our traffic was just came back. And we received about three thirty five hundred cars a day. On seven fifty west. Mind you, we got the numbers back off eighty nine. Uh, parallel that we have twenty five to thirty thousand cars a day. Highway. So, yes, there will be some traffic. More traffic, but we are very much reclassifying that road, widening it and making it completely a different road.
That's next eight years.
It it that's that's just roughly the timeline. But we have started the process to start asking for funding within the next three years. Usually it takes about five years of after you start asking for funding. And then to finally fund the project. And so we rolled out of Larson Lane, started asking for funding, right? For West Harrisville Road. And now. Finally, in twenty twenty four, the funding is available. So it is it is a process through the state and federal to get those fundings. But it is, that is our next. Major point of focus is seven fifty west, especially with coming in the highway eighty nine. To our new development of the city, Councils.
So what we're, what you're saying is, is that seven fifty on the north is going to be impacted more because of what? Has happened.
Well. What we're waiting to see.
As commercial development continues in Pleasant View, how is that an impact to us?
Again, you don't know that exactly. What we're saying is we're waiting to see and understand in Pleasant View and UDOT. Come to agreement on twenty five fifty and how they open that up. Right now, it's just closed down. For whatever reasons. But right now, but prior. When they just closed it down at eighty nine for one way and then you could sneak behind the. The Chevron and get out there. Again, they now are opening up another, um, through their commercial development. That they've got going out to forty seven hundred. So that should ease some. You know, maybe put some more down, six hundred. I don't know. I can't tell you exactly how traffic is going to flow. Um, that's fine, but it's not, I do really see. The majority of traffic will be eighty million coming in. There, but as commercial grows and you identified that area, it was all commercial. It's 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 gonna be what it is with traffic and we've understood that. Kind of like we understand what the person like. We we understand that there's commercial, it's a main throwaway. Until maybe something happens with UDOT and UDOT City, that they come alive a lot, everyone. Could be a possibility in the future. We we just don't like.
So they also still have this. Yes, but it's outside of studio, so so discussions. But to allow two-way traffic on. From the honest, uh, studio. To enable to develop for children, maybe now. The traffic. It's forced out to twenty five fifty, but in any south end. So seven fifty west, we should. For. You can turn in. Highway. If you're fat or turn, you will not be able to turn. So that's what Justin was referring to, their development impacted. How that's in the future, we we don't know because it is a. Take that, we love you. Discussion is all cities running same order. So it should come to us. Any amendments to that, if they do make a change, I would say install a signal. It's part of doing that. But what that looks like, that's we.
About fire. Curious to see that. Fire truck, they can still settle the fee required. Put out a building that tall.
So that's certainly what we should be concerned with. Chose in attendance and he has not indicated that there would be an issue for them. So they have to have letter to get approval on each side. They have certain supply for sea fire, but they haven't indicated to us that that would be an issue. Another comment made by the developer team was that we felt just referencing twenty five fifty and Pleasant View. Commercial zone in Pleasant View, it's something like sixty five feet. Now to make decisions based on how pleasant that aspect is. He did. Just wanted to give you all.
You're pleasant, it's about sixty five, so.
In the some. Side fifteen fifty, there is some seventy five to sixty five feet.
Is there a reason they store?
In Pleasant View. It would, yeah.
So I never thought, maybe, but so on, first, really. If they want secondary road, it needs to go out to fifty, it's to stay up seven fifty. Got a part of this. I gotta be careful, I know, but no seven fifty, please. You want to go out, uh, fifty or don't have a second. So.
Would you like to hear? Come on.
So my first question that you were talking about as far as the one twenty five. That study was done by, uh, Suzie Becker. The vice president for the. Financial Services for Zions Bank. So she's worked with you before. She took all the information, wrote it all down, and that's the sheet. So it wasn't just us grabbing things. And the biggest thing, obviously, it's really the height is of the issue here. Seems like everything is traffic. And it's about seven fifty.
It's like, it's like.
Right, but 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 for the most part, would it be helpful if you guys saw a traffic study of the seven fifty? Done by the same UDOT company that did our traffic study for eighty nine? Cause I just got that back today at four o'clock. I emailed it to you. But that traffic study shows, like he would, what he mentioned is coming off right now. Traffic study that was done on seven fifty as of May of twenty twenty three, thirty three hundred vehicles a day. And they point out that a lot of that, of the increase. Is because twenty five fifty north was shut down. And then they actually break down our entire deal of how much even peak hours, how many vehicles are going to be coming in there? And they break it down to ninety percent is coming off of eighty nine, ten percent will be. Up seven fifty. So when that opening happens, whenever they open up, set twenty five fifty north, so yeah. The third, the thirty three hundred cars that are on there right now is going to be alleviated a little bit. But even the traffic that we create off of that is going to be less than what it is right now. Because you got to figure eight out of ten cars coming out of the, out of the neighborhood, it's a neighborhood. I understand nobody wants cars driving through their 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 place. But the traffic is going to be coming out of there. It's going to be self inflicted. It's going to be people driving their own cars, leaving their house, coming to our facility and going back. So a lot, there's nothing else back there. A lot of the traffic that's coming in there is self inflicted. You know, people leave their house, but three, four times a day, they're getting up, go get bread, go through. That's what happens. There's nothing in that neighborhood that's pulling people. Out that direction. Maybe it shows the percentage, ninety percent of the traffic coming in is fifty percent is coming from. From south, forty percent is coming from the north, ten percent is coming from over there. So our effect on seven fifty is nothing. I understand that. Is there going to be enough parking? Yes, we have three hundred and like forty seven stalls.
Please.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, uh, Rudy.
So. Uh, just maybe a quick clarification as we talk about this. All great questions, like. Are we talking about a site plan approval or approval of this building?
No, we are talking about. Two.
So we're changing the land use codes, um, sure, as far as height on. I mean, talking specifically about his problem. So. All all great questions, but really we're talking one is only issue. And then traffic studies, as fascinating as that is, is not a zoning height restriction type conversation.
There is, uh, that, but it is related in that this ordinance includes a change to our sense of law.
Okay, but it's not, it's the whole of. It's a new project. It's not just one thing. Okay, just we need that clarification as we ask these questions. Might be appropriate, but the questions today are for the city and this zone as a whole. The questions for him specifically come later.
Thank you. So seventy feet is for the whole initial zone of this.
Specifically. Sports facility. So. The way that it's proposed and included in use code, it's a conditional use. For indoor. So specifically. So assuming you got a second application for indoor play facility, they could potentially build a set.
So so we could have some whole student seven buildings across there. We could possibly. People want that to build there.
Only if they're indoor.
So they want. Hotel. This.
Any other use would not be approved.
Yeah, we wrote it very specifically. So we wouldn't run into this future issue, Richard.
So if you have like. I understand professional football field. How many people fit inside, sit the passenger?
Okay, so this isn't a professional football field. What this is, is it's two indoor fields that is going to be basically. Uh. The capabilities, it's basically for our youth. So we want to focus on, we want that stepping stone to be. From high school to collegiate. We're gonna have youth soccer clubs, youth football clubs. Youth volleyball. We're gonna have twelve pickup indoor pickleball courts for old folks like us. So, um, but what it's going to be doing is. The height, what we need is to be able to hit. Hunt and kick and actually have a football game in there. We're not planning on bringing in a pro, a professional football team. We're not planning on bringing in any professional soccer teams. We're talking about hosting state championships. You know, games. Youth games, locally, Weaver County, Box Elder County, that kind of stuff. So that's what we're, what we're doing. We're not doing this as about anything professional.
I thought I read that somewhere. Sorry.
Yeah. The capacity. It's gonna be, well.
You're hosting a state, a state tournament.
Oh, yeah.
What's the capacity? What's the legal capacity of it? Gonna be.
It hasn't been set yet. As far as, because I mean, right now, they, we just, we haven't been set, we don't know what we can do with it yet. We got to get an approval, find out uses, so we don't have a, but it's again, you're, I think you're comparing it to like. University of Utah, or you're comparing it to something like that and, you know, that's fifty thousand seat stadium. We're not doing. We're not doing collegiate football. We're doing, most of your high school football games have five thousand people. If that. So it's not like this is a massive struggle, you know, massive.
That's that's understandable, but only three hundred party.
Okay, we've already had a discussion with. Sorry, just, I'm sorry, right, it's, but with the owner of all that. As far as we purchase on with him, he's been in here multiple times to purchase that other land above us. So. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so to answer all your questions and we've. Put a lot of work in and study into, to avoid the issues that Harrisville City could run into. But and we've done, like I said, we've done everything we can to get you answers. Like I say, with the traffic study and everything else, I know he says that's. Now, I, it's, this isn't what it's about, but it's what it's talking. And so obviously it needs to be. To be discussed and proven that. The traffic on seven fifty is not going to be what everybody thinks it is. Cause there's no, no, the fastest way to get in, get out is eighty nine. Nobody's gonna go around to come around unless you live in that neighborhood.
So I guess we need to go back to talking about.
Four is for, um, this ordinance, it has to be like. Sports facility and and that will allow seventy feet, nothing else.
And that's the highest peak.
Highest. Building, the walls, eve of walls is fifty. And and the ridge is seventy, but that ridge is, you've got two hundred twenty five feet from the eve to the ridge. So it isn't like this is gonna be some straight up monstrosity. It's got a two point one two pitch per twelve. Less than your house. I mean, on a house, that's roll roofing, cause it's less than three. So that's, so visually, that's how slow this is, this is gaining. And so when you look at it, it's not, most people can't look at a building and go, okay, that's thirty feet, that's forty feet, that's fifty feet. You can't see it. You can sit there, you can look at a hotel and you can count levels. But even that's not steady. Some of those are based off ten feet, some of those are based off twelve feet. So you can't even. But if those, if you don't have a pairing, something to gauge at, you can't tell. There's between a forty foot building and a sixty foot building. And I understand that the height becomes, people are talking about a view. Well, the views to the east. The view that they had that we've already cleaned up is across a muddy pond, a weed field. Lot. You know, it had an old rickety bar. And it had a junkyard in it. It had cars, it had trash, it had everything stacked up. It was filled with concrete. We've already spent two hundred thousand dollars cleaning that up.
I listened to all this on the planning divisions, that rough task. Let's go back to the title. Understand yourself under product connection.
Hey, sneak it in there.
Really know, actually, businessman too. At this point, that's not the issue. The issue is, I look at the building, first of all, your walls are all exceeding. But we have right now at forty, you're fifty. And I understand what you're saying as far as the height, what's going on. And I'm looking at, you know, the point of the seventy.
Seven.
Seven, excuse. Seven, excuse me. Keep talking, why, he's reminding me it's twenty-seven. And so, the real issue, and, and I, you know, and I'll skirt this back. I'm sorry, I didn't think more of you part of, past the facilities at this point in time, fire wise, and taking care of your building. Or even the ones in twenty-five, fifty, at sixty-five feet. Did you, yes, you said, no, I was on that board and I understand that, and I understand what they've got facility wise. I am just saying, I'm concerned. Okay, that's my opinion personally. Okay, and I understand what it takes in volunteers, I understand what it takes to do that. And that's probably one of my biggest concerns, even listening to other people in the other city saying the height of their new buildings. Is a fire trap on the top of the floor. Cause they can't even do, now, that's, I give you hearsay, I respect that. And I guess that's going back to the junkyard, so I'll. Seem like a concern, so when I start talking about passing in. I want to be able to make sure we're taking care of your facilities, as well as we're taking care of the people who are running here. So today is the first thing that you really talked about, how this affects. Harrisville City as far as residents choosing your building, thank you. Up until this point, I only heard about this much.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's helped, but at the same time, I'm sure we have a risk protection that we can take care of the height of this facility. And I'm not gonna go into the other things I'm concerned about, is that hasn't got anything to do with this one, this one. But the height does, and really, my concern is, is this building doesn't fit the demographics of what Harrisville building. And just, and it's not, you reflect upon what you've done. I don't see how this building, taking up this magnitude of places, fits the scope and sequence what Harrisville's. I know all the answers from my aspect, I appreciate all the studies that have been done, because that works, it's selling. And I am really concerned that this is an oversized building in a small city. That doesn't fit any, where you go over, other people, industrial park. Thought one of the things that meet this guy, it fits that position, not though to, yeah, we. Okay, but that's my biggest concern, but even else, certainly. Concerned that public services can take care of their needs, because I know I have to, to take care of it. And yes, it does tire them back. It really does, because we've got a public service and police, we have to have fire. We have to have the other things to take care of your needs with magnitude what you're asking us for. Does that make sense?
Hundred percent.
Okay, thank you, and it's not a doubt plan.
Oh, no.
But it sits right here.
It's a, it's a, it's a absolutely perfect, I, you know, thought to bring up. But what we did, we did do to design this building the way it is just for that, is it is a. Perfect, it's a steel structure, there is not wood, this is all built out of steel. And it's, uh, it's got IMP forty-six R rated. Um, exterior panels, which has, is sandwiched between steel, so you can't get the, you can't get foam going. It's sandwiched in steel, so it's completely wrapped in steel, and in the inside of it is an open fact. So there's really nothing, there's concrete and steel, there's nothing to burn. So the, your concern is, is legit as far as, you know, um. You know, I don't, I don't know what the fire trucks, he's never made a concern, he's been in a lot of the meetings and has never brought that up. But just what the building's made of. Is the fact that, and there's nothing in it, it's not like it's an office building, we have a ton of electrical and everything going through it.
Everything that you talked about makes total perfect sense, I've walked through these buildings, I've been in soccer arenas, I understand the structure of them. And how it is, and watched what's happening down on Spol Street, I understand the traffic there, but the safety of the building works when they're using. It's funny, but I also understand that, at a given time, something does go. And it does create a hazard, because you can't get above the top to shoot water out. If that's what is needed, that's, that's, that's an issue, and that's, it's just me.
No, absolutely, hundred percent.
But, you know, I'm done, two brokers that we're, we're not talking about, he still wants to get all. Approval letters, so they will be. The building.
Sure.
Before that, he could ever build, all we're talking is.
Seventy.
Yeah, we wanna have seventy foot, that's, that's the question, right?
It's only a seventy foot or two feet.
Yeah. It's always.
Hold on. We're gonna tweet to more discussion.
Yeah.
Table this.
Yeah. And if we could table this until we put it on the second, right, in longer.
So you wanna do another?
I mean, I, I, yeah, could we? I'll make a motion, we table this until the next city council. Just give us an emotion, you approve it.
You're not.
Yeah, I'll.
Very discussion, so Kenny made a motion to table it, Steve you. All in favor? Any opposed to that? Gonna table it?
Yeah, you do, but it'll be on the second, you could.
Okay, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dean, as a discussion, also action to got first resolution twenty-three dot eleven. Which is a resolution to authorize green sidewalk.
Yeah, if you guys remember last month, um, we were, we talked about two grants that were. Getting approval for the two thousand north, I mean, the, uh, on behind majestic elementary for the temporary turnaround. This is just the approval process that would get to go ahead and sign the agreement with you dot and move forward with. Getting that funding and premium, that infrastructure to help alleviate some of the traffic for the school to run along. That was a seventy-five, twenty-five split. Seventy-five. And, and most of the twenty-five percent that's coming out of ours will be done at. City doing actual labor.
And motion?
I make a motion that we approve. Uh, ordinance five forty in the C P D. Harrisville Resolution twenty-three eleven, resolution to authorize agreement for a safe sidewalk grant for twenty-four, twenty-five. I'll second it.
Oh, thank you. We're gonna need bigger. This is so.
Yes.
Councilfish, yes, counselor wife.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item number six, which is public comments, this is for any one of the audience, like, come. Forward.
My name's Captain Enzen Barrett, I live twenty-three thirty-nine, or seven fifty west. Also own the property of twenty-nine thirty-nine. Twenty-three ninety-three west, oh, so many twos and threes and nines. Anyway, I own the house my daughter lives in too, and they're both on seven fifty. I just wanna say thank you so much for tabling that motion to change the height on that building. You are not just looking out the window at junk cars. The sunsets are absolutely dynamic. It is beautiful to look out windows and see that sunset, and if that building goes up at that height. You're not gonna see it anymore, if there's a problem there. How you gonna get to it? You're not, traffic's gonna be on our road. The main point is the height, dead set against it. And I think you all know as well as I do, if you approve one, somebody else is gonna come in later and say, well, you did. I want to, come on, please. And you're gonna do it, maybe not you specifically, but it'll get done. So, thank you for tabling that, I hope it doesn't happen. I don't mind even having a sports thing, but everything he's proposing is already in the rush complex. And I don't know how you're gonna build a three-story bar with no wood. So, there you go, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'm going to close public comments. Go on to item seven, which is. First, Chief Olson, since you're standing.
Yeah, I, I don't have a tongue for this week, but. We did get our drone this week. And asked my pilot's desk, so they answered, I saw a couple minutes. Well, just in learning and flying, but no, we do have it, um, so we can start getting into the. Training of it, and get my pulse ready, so in the next four or so months, we can maybe use it. Cause it's meant to. Oh, yeah, a couple of the guys tried to go and F F A, or they, they went down, so they had to reschedule, so. Uh, we're in the process of that, we'll have a, we'll have our instructor come out again and teach us how to use. The controller and all stuff.
Just wanna say thank you guys all for coming out, groundbreaking, that was a special event for the city, I hope you guys felt that we're all. Supported by other communities and, and our representative more helping out. It's just, it felt like a great event for our city, looks like you got a little spotlight, so. Um, and then the other thing that Mike probably should have mentioned, but didn't, is that Saturday, if you guys got time, come over and support Walmart. Uh, children's medical network, Mike and myself will be over there doing some activities with Walmart to. Help them out their store.
What time?
From ten to two, my.
Ten to two.
Yeah, so, um, that's kind of where we're at. Had a great meeting today on, um, moving forward with the double porch building, and we'll discuss that all morning later.
So I just, uh, like to excuse. Tell this way, but he said we have another pretty successful. So. We began, as far as that goes, opted not to. For the public treatment taxation, which is gonna. Carrying this first tape, that would be all we do. Things going. The hand review process for employees is chilling, sort of, as far as.
One question for you.
So we talked about the sound cleaning, okay, and scared, you know, they've been contacted all the years. So this, six, three teachers, people here can. You'd like me to perform, show that we can do it much, share, and, or maybe.
One suggestion.
Instead of the.
Parking lot got praised. Uh, I'm thinking if we just move up on the hill. Have more thing down there, maybe they could put a few things out. Majority of it, yeah, on him, it's just.
There's logistics of the.
Right, just that little, you know, just above that little grass, they could be up on the platform. All the room. I just, suggesting, cause I just thought, God. Their line, I mean, they had great turnout, but it just kinda got. Yeah, climb, so it's just, a, and if you're not, then that's fine, I just, it'd be great that they're there.
I think the ten, the, the city has identified the subject, so they is October seventh.
I mean, you're the actor, so.
Same schedule, like, they will use, I'm sure, so I'd say. Thank you. Uh, Cooper, any question?
No. That job is good, some of the over the page. I think the thing is nice is we have a system.
Senior lunch.
For the senior lunch, excuse me. I think it's a lot of fun, and, so, I think it's gonna continue to grow, it's gonna help people in. I think, as it grows, it's gonna be more beautiful, now, it seems to be. That's not an intention we. I think as we continue to reach out, there's been several people. And so we can start him, as that starts from.
Risk.
Risk. Sure.
Free food, yes.
Appreciate all this, all this staff, has made it, you know, this is, it's great, makes it easy for us.
Thank you for stepping up. Encourage all the other.
Encourage all the other.
Steve would be, I think, Chris.
Uh, yes, tell Chief Olson, thank you. For the two officers. They did a very professional job for us, super appreciated that, thank you. But thank you, that's all I have.
Sure.
Suggestion is, there's a placement, but. With Harrisville. Harrisville, Harrisville, you're not changing your name.
Do you know anything might have to change?
Wouldn't it just be like, the high schools are named after the high school like Warrior? Wouldn't it just be like the high schools are named after the high school, like Warrior? Or you could use two of those.
Do you know, I deliver.
You pointing at your east. Three, that's so close.
Well, I'll think about that.
Just see, just practice the.
Thing, this is. I'm only born of the. Super district and. Apparently it's state law, but any time we have truth and taxation there, like. So I'm just telling you what I. We told my need to tell you, you know, I'll engine to turn back under the. Sewer district that we've done, so there's a proposal, and those post have to increase for central. It's, uh, proposing to increase the property tax rate above. Post. Certified tax rate of twenty twenty-three tax a year. The improvement district tax, the four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar president is going to increase from a hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents. Twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents, which is fifty dollars and seventy-three cents per year. The district tax on forty-seven thousand business increased to twenty-nine. One to two fifty. Which is twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents per year. As the proposed budget is approved, central sewer group district could increase its property tax budget by thirteen percent. One million two hundred and five thousand above last year's budget rate excluding. So all concerned citizens are legislating any. Tax increase, which will be August fourteenth at the Sioux District Building Administration Building at six P M. If you were, the information, uh. Following this city too, it shows the tax increases are what it's gonna be. Open years, it is, this is out of twelve. Four percent increase here. But it has been increased since twenty twenty.
So this is a natural reason to.
Yeah. Right, and that is all I have tonight. So we're. Ending with our regular. Scheduled program. And we're meeting to a close executive session, so I will need a motion to close this meeting.
I'll make a motion that we. Go into a close executive session.
I have a motion to the second.
Close executive session for the purposes, right, under the U. C A two dash four five one A discussion of the carried.
Thank you. Okay, so we have that much in here, so it's okay with that? Join you all. Councilman Lovin?
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. So I'm gonna give you a brief break and those that are.